The public law of the 1975 just noticed against the Asprey's Bar Press on August 29, 2022 has been duly appetized in the Asprey's Bar Press issue on September 1, 2022. All municipal clerks of the township and boroughs within the Freehold Regional High School District has been notified and the requirements of this posting have been met on August 29, 2022. Will you please rise and join me in the pleasurable legions? Mrs. Sthana, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Yes. In addition to the items that were listed on the agenda printed prior to the meeting, we also discussed exception number seven matters under docket E 2021-003456, matter under P 2023-00447, matters 2022-10174, and although it is noted on the agenda that was preprinted, the board did not discuss the negotiations of custodial maintenance.
Is that all, Mrs. Sthana? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 27 meeting?
Make motion.
That was Mrs. McCabe and Mrs. Higley. That April 27 meeting was the public hearing. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Cabbey.
Yes.
Mr. Cobb.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mr. Curie.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes. Just to note, the communications are on file at the Board Secretary. All communications with the Board Secretary are on file. We are now ready for Dr. Sampson's superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bruno. So we're going to open up with student recognition awards this evening, and obviously we have a packed house, which we love to see. One of the things that we're trying to do a little bit differently, we usually do this meeting in June, and what we found over the years is that there's, you know, an inordinate amount of other evening events happening in June at the high school, particularly for our juniors and seniors. And so we tried to move the student recognition awards up a little bit to take that, to take that pressure off of parents and students for coming out. So hopefully this works well. And we are going to begin, so everybody knows we'll do one high school at a time. We just ask you to, I think we'll be wowed by the sort of vast diversity of exceptionalism that exists within the Freehold Regional High School District. And we are going to open up with Dr. Donahue in Coltsneck High School.
Good evening, parents, guardians, and students. It's my pleasure to open the district medal ceremony. Thank you to the Board of Education, Dr. Sampson, and the entire central administration staff for holding this event. It is a privilege to share this evening with the talented students of the Freehold Regional High School District. So what I do as the first person, I will have, we have a lot of common awards. I will read the kind of the description of a lot of these common awards so everybody in the audience knows where they are, and then as my colleagues present, they'll, they won't read as much about those similar awards. So tonight's first award is the caring award. The caring award is presented to a senior each year who has demonstrated concern for others in his or her actions. This year's CNHS recipient is Esther Kamara. I don't think Esther's here tonight, but we wanted to recognize her. She was selected for her generous spirit and her desire to help others in need. She's active, she's active in her church, in our school community, in the organizations at our school. So congratulations to Esther. I'm an Eagle Scout tonight, and Eagle Scout is the highest achievement or rank attainable in the Boy Scouts of America. Since its inception in 1911, only 4% of Scouts have earned the rank after a lengthy review process. An Eagle Scout must demonstrate scout spirit, an ideal attitude based on the scout oath and law, plus service and leadership. Coltsneck High School would like to recognize our Eagle Scout. Congratulations, Sutuches Lupadia. Probably should have mentioned at the beginning, students, when we call you up, you'll proceed down the ramp, and then we'll shake hands. Okay?
Yeah, good shot.
Our next award is the Allshore Symphonic Band and Jazz Band. These awards are selective ensembles for high school students in Monmouth and Ocean Counties. Students prepare their scales, audition pieces, and sight reading capabilities for months leading up to these auditions. They then must audition to gain entrance, competing against the highest level musicians from schools all over the area. Students that are in Allshore Symphonic and Jazz Band are among the highest level performers at the high school level and deserve recognition for their talents. Tonight, Coltsneck High School would like to recognize first, Agush Kasapi. He is Allshore Symphonic Band and Allshore Jazz Band. Ironically, a mother grabbed me in the parking lot on my way over here, and we had a band trip out, and I don't think they're getting back in time. That wasn't planned that way, it just happened. So if some of the kids got here, I'll announce them. Claire Kalawski, Allshore Symphonic Band. Patrick Reed Roffler, Allshore Symphonic Band. Andrew Conde, Allshore Symphonic Band. Katie Shane, Allshore Symphonic Band. We're good. Thank you. So tonight, I have with us members of our award-winning Navy NJRO-2C program. We are one of the top programs in the country, and we're going to recognize some of our students for some outstanding achievements tonight. First, I'd like to bring Major Penzac and Master Chief Duncan up there in the back. First, I'd like to recognize our orienteering champion, national championship teams. Orienteering is a land navigation sport where the cadets are given a map, compass, and whistle. Usually, these courses are about a mile and a half to five miles in wooded areas, and they must go through checkpoints and hit us, and hit them in a certain order, and it's a timed event. The Coltsneck High School NJROTC orienting, orienteering team competed against the top 23 national qualifiers and captured first place. We were national champions in orienteering. Colindolka, Cameron Gindy, Julia Albonato, William Stapleton, Thomas Rocker. I'd also like to, I'd like to bring down Paige Suhaki. Paige is a freshman who competed at the varsity level against 42 of the top female runners in the nation. Paige finished first and was named the Varsity Female National Orienteering Champion. So wait, this is the actual cool part. You gotta, you gotta hear this, all right? Paige has been selected to compete for the Junior World Orienteering Championship, which will be training this summer in Bulgaria, and then competing in Romania for the summer of 2023. Congratulations. Should we leave him up here? Somebody might be up seeing there. Okay. All right. So we also have another national champion in NJROTC. At the Navy Nationals, Academic Athletic and Drill Championships, these were held in Pensacola, Florida earlier this year. Coltsneck High School won the 2023 Navy NJROTC Athletic Champion. So we were national champions in athletics this year. Athletics consists of curl-ups, push-ups, and a 16 by 100 relay. So I'd like to bring up the team. Alexander Bookman, Michael Poppy, Luis Churchio, Christopher Dalton, Michael Friska, Olivia Edgerton, Richard Hamilton, Brandon Kerwin, Mason McBrig, Darren Milvan, Sophie Meyerson, Avery Metten, Natalie O'Connor, Gabrielle Penzek, Blake Glorbinowitz, Tyler Russ, Lucas Santinari, Jessica Schleninter, Bailey Seidenberg, Nicholas Seidenberg, Ryan Seidenberg, Ahmed Fahoum, Morgan Spensley, Iowa Spencer, Kate Suhaki, Sophia Vena, and Ryan Westrich. So as we're taking pictures, and just to tell you a little bit, athletics, like I said, curl-ups, push-ups, and 16 by 100. For the curl-ups, our team actually made 3,859 total curl-ups. That's 241 per cadet, and this is timed. And for push-ups, our cadets did about 1,106. That's about an average of 70 per cadet in that time's time. So they did a great job. Congratulations. I'm very, very proud of you. I would like to introduce my supervisor of extracurricular activities, Mr. David Swirrs, who will go through our athletic championships.
Thanks, Dr. Donahue. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start with our state championship teams from the winter, and then we did have a state championship team from the spring. So first, I'm going to bring up our indoor track teams, our boys and girls. If they could come up here, the team members who are present. At the Central Jersey Group 3 meet, the Coltsneck girls won their fourth sectional title in a row, which brings their current streak to eight championships in a row when counting both the winter and spring. They had 13 medal winners. Girls' members are Abby Mentonis, Alyssa Kovall, Ava Wilmot, Gia Karadere, Gianna Canova, Ayu Franklin, Juliana Brown, Kylie Jacketeau, Lauren Zeltzer, Liz Scarpa, Maddie Fazalari, Mahi Patel, Michaela Hartman, Natalie O'Connor, Olivia Peschauer, Sarah Aboud, Sienna Halim, and Sophia Scarpa. The boys indoor track team won its fourth Central Jersey Group 3 sectional state title in the last eight years. They are Albert Yodakis, Andrew Besculides, Andrew Crock, Braden Manzey, Brandon Kerwin, Aaron Alba, Hunter Salcupa, Jake Hartman, Jay Amidala, John Shapiro, Mason McQuaid, Matt Spirito, Matt Steinberg, Mike Freesha, Nick Borro, Ryan Brush, and Skylar Louis. Congratulations to both indoor track teams. Our next championship team from the winter is our boys bowling team. If they could come up. The boys bowling team won the Central Jersey Group 2 state sectional title for the first time in program history. They are Jason Bennett, Owen Clark, Shay Bresnahan, Tommy Sanfilippo, and Tyler Pierce. Shout out to Coach Mike York, who's still in his third base coaching attire and hustles here. Last but not least, can the boys golf team please come up? This past Monday, our boys golf team won the Central Jersey Group 3 state sectional title for the second time in three years. They are Eric Kastner, Jack Aiello, Brian Farsina, Ethan Weinberg, and Dominic Petrosino. Also here is head coach Brian Parks. Congratulations to him.
At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Levetta Ross, principal of Freehold High School, to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to those who have just received awards and those who will receive rewards. At this time, I'd like, Mr. Mel, if I'm joining you, we're a team, tag team, so we're going to do this together. To get started, we're going to recognize an award that Dr. Donahue already shared information about. I'll take these off, I can read. I need them for distance. And that is the Monmouth County Caring Award. Our recipient, as Dr. Donahue said, created a project to help others. Hers was focused on Helping Hands for Ukraine, where she created a website to educate everyone about what's going on in Ukraine, as well as donations to support and help the folks in Ukraine. And that is Eva Su. The next awards that we have, they are the finalists for the National Merit Scholarship. Just to give you a little information about the National Merit Scholarship finalist program, the National Merit Scholarship program is an academic competition and scholarship that began in 1955, and it recognizes students who are the highest scores on the PSAT in combination with their academics. They begin as, after taking the test and qualifying, they begin as commended students. Then they are recognized as semifinalists. Then we go to finalists. It began with 50,000 students. Now we have two finalists of the 14,000 that are remaining. Those two are Yel Spector. We tonight are going to clap the gills because tonight she's also receiving another award, and she could not be with us this evening, and Duben Ekizona. And Duben, don't leave.
I'd like to also call down the following members of our Allshore Symphonic Band. Aiden Edwards, Serene Sue, Simon Kowerski, Samuel Rodriguez, Lauren Nagy, and Duben Ekizona. Duben also won the Region 2 Jazz Band Trombone II Award. Congratulations. Congratulations again. We have two athletic award recipients tonight. One unfortunately couldn't be with us, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention his accomplishments. Angelo Messina was a three-time district champion, a Region 6 finalist this year, individual state championship qualifier, and achieved 100 wins for his career. He is the second most decorated wrestler in Freehold Borough history. Just like to recognize.
And our recipient who's here, this year had one of the most outstanding swim seasons in school history. He was the Shore Conference Champion in the 100 breaststroke. He was the Monmouth County Champion. He broke two Monmouth County tournament records, longstanding records, in the 200 IM and the 100 breaststroke. He placed second in the breaststroke at the Meet of Champions and third in the individual medley at the Meet of Champions. He was first Team Allshore, first Team Allstate, and recently committed to Florida State, and that is Daniel Lister. And at this time, I'd like to call up the first school of Menalupan High School, Mr. Sean Kirby.
Good evening. First, I would like to congratulate all of our district medal winners this evening, and I would like to thank Dr. Sampson, our district administration, and the Board of Education for making this evening's medal ceremony possible. I would like to begin by recognizing four students at Menalupan High School who qualified for Allshore Band. They are first, Allshore Jazz Band, Ritvik Soni. And Allshore Symphonic Band, Jason Katz. Connor Pascalwicz. And Matthew Rousch. Congratulations. Next, I would like to recognize our Shore Math League team. So Shore Math League is a monthly math competition that runs from September to March and involves 19 high schools from Monmouth County. While in recent years, Menalupan High School has done well as a team and had students who earned individual performance honors, this is our first overall team victory since 2018. First, I would like to introduce our Math League advisor, Mr. Cartaya. Mr. Cartaya also serves as an honors and AP calculus teacher at Menalupan High School. This is Mr. Cartaya's message to our Math League team. The story of 2022-2023 season starts with a core group of highly motivated students. This group produced not only great scores, but their excellence, enthusiasm, and positive attitudes quickly spread to the lower grades and resulted in a steady increase of involvement and contributions from sophores and freshmen. Menalupan first took over the lead spot after the second competition, when the team registered an impressive perfect individual, relay, and team score. After the second competition, they never lost the top spot. With early success came increased interest and participation, and by mid-season, our competition room was constantly filled with capacity. This group is without a doubt very talented academically, but what makes them truly special is that while they were aware of the standings and their chances to win, they were always intrinsically motivated by their own curiosity and desire to test and push themselves. When students made mistakes, those who succeeded became leaders and offered support, not just in teaching content, but also modeling the type of positive attitude and resiliency necessary to improve. Some of these leaders also stand out, are standout competitors who deserve special mention. First, Robbie Tripathi earned a perfect individual score of 30 out of 30. Justin Miller with a score of 48 out of 30. Rishabh Chakrabarti and Zhang Meng with individual scores of 26 out of 30. At this time, I'm going to call up the rest of the team members from our math team. First, Daya Avalor. Saketh Ayagari. Anish Chakrabarti. Anathro Chinta. Vidharam Chowdhury. Luke Sufon. Ryan Cohen. Victoria Klemme. Ryan Genitey. Ryan Edwards. Vian Jane. Ivan Kasekin. Adar Skumar. Bernard Yang. Kevin Louis. Krish Patel. Krish Shah. Next, I'd also like to recognize one of our Math League members also scored a perfect eight hundred on the math portion of his SAT, that's Shang Mang. Finally, I'd like to recognize Matthew Cohen, who earned his Eagle Scout this year. Matthew, come on up. Matthew earned his Eagle Scout by completing a park renovation project at Thompson Grove Park in Menalupan. He reconstructed old and worn-out picnic benches and tables, as well as built a new picnic table by the water front. At this time, I'd like to introduce the senior of Menalupan High School, Ms. Beth English.
Good evening. I'd first like to recognize Menalupan High School's recipient of the Caring Award. Our recipient is Jada Goldberg. Please come down. In two thousand nineteen, Jada founded a local fundraising chapter of Scope, which is the summer camp opportunities that promote education. This organization fundraises to send underprivileged and deserving children to an overnight summer camp across the nation. Events Jada has organized included a toiletry drive, cupcake wars, a tie-dye event, Krispy Cream Drive, a GoFundMe campaigns. She spent countless hours advertising and promoting these events. Jada's chapter of Scope raised enough money to send ten kids to camp. Jada is a National Honor Society inductee, honor roll, and she will be attending the Indiana University Kelly School of Business in the fall. This winter, we had an incredible wrestling program and season, both boys and girls. We are, Menalupan Boys took home District Eighteen Champions. I would like to call up and recognize our male wrestlers that placed first in District Eighteen. First, Vincent Kane. And Vincent DiPiero. Senior Vincent DiPiero also went on to place in Regions and went for two years in a row to represent Menalupan in Atlantic City at our state championship tournament. Now, anybody newcomers to wrestling, girls do not have a district championship, but they do have Regions. And we had two female wrestlers place in our Regions and went on to States, so that Now, something that the regional takes seriously, the Shore Conference Athletics and, of course, Menalupan High School, is obviously the mental health of all of our students and especially our student athletes. It's become a pandemic on many levels, in the college level, professional levels, and now impacting our high school students. Because of this, we've had three students I would like to recognize that went far and above and beyond for not only Menalupan High School, but Shore Conference, our district, representing themselves at the Monmouth County Mental Health Symposium. At this time, I'd like to call up Ava Gavinelli, Grace Defendis, and Mark Stefanelli. Ava Gavinelli started a mental health club for athletes that I also facilitate through my office, called, named Athletes Supporting Strong Minds. Grace Defendis works with our guidance counselor, Messica, and created a club, Begin Your Bloom, which focuses on communication in regards to feeling without judgment and spreading kindness. Mark Stefanelli is not only a standout on our lacrosse field, but is also a representative of the Shore Conference ambassadors, which represent, there's two athletes per school in the Shore Conference. One of the initiatives through the student ambassadors was to promote mental health awareness within our student athletes. When approached with the opportunity to speak at the Symposium, they jumped at the chance. Now, little did they know, they would be up on stage in front of hundreds of adults, raising awareness and speaking their truth and helping other people find their voice. Congratulations, I'm so proud of you and you're doing well for all of us.
At this time, I'd like to call back up the principal of Colson Lake High School, Dr. Brian Donahue.
I've been on a flight, two months already, so I appreciate that. I have one of my allshore symphonic band students who was able to make it, so I want to recognize Alexander Busby, if he can come down. At this time, it was my pleasure to introduce the principal of Freehold Township High School, Mr. Dennis Philopone.
Thank you. What a great night when we celebrate the most important people in our school district, our students. Thank you to Dr. Sampson and the board for giving us the opportunity to do so. And a special thank you, as I always have said, to the parents of these wonderful students. They do not happen by mistake, and you deserve a lot of credit and round of applause for the work that you've done. You know, I've already heard about the Monmouth County Guidance Directors Caring Award. At Freehold Township, this year's Caring Award is going to twin sisters, Maddie and Carly Stern. Maddie and Carly are DPAs. Maddie and Carly organized and created an organization called Supporting Senegal. Through this organization, they reached out to African Agriculture Corporation that grows alfalfa on the outskirts of the Sahara Desert. They worked together to secure donations of desperately needed dental supplies for the citizens of Senegal. Through fundraisers and donations from dentists in central Jersey, they raised the capital and garnered supplies. They negotiated with dental supply companies for the lowest price per item to make the most use of available funds. They also researched shipping possibilities. After the items were sent, they participated in a virtual conference with young Senegalese teen girls using a French translator to understand the community needs and to make improvements for future shipments of products. The final step in this process involves setting up plans with the Senegalese representatives to the UN General Assembly. Congratulations and thank you to Maddie and Carly. At Freehold Township High School, we house the Animal and Botanical Sciences Academy. Students from throughout the region, regional district can apply and if accepted, attend FTHS to focus on various topics covering agribiology. All students are members of our school's chapter of the FFA, Future Farmers of America. We had a group of students win their particular competition at the Spring Career Development Event. Students competing in this event gained experience and skills essential to the production and marketing of agricultural products. The team event illustrates related careers and offers a firsthand look at developing product knowledge and driving sales. Congratulations to the following students. Could Brianna Rosmarin, Scarlett Sampino, Jumana Abul Malak, and Ava Doohan, please come Brianna was first place in agricultural sales, and the team of Brianna, Scarlett, Jumana, and Ava placed first in agricultural sales. Freehold Township High School is very proud to recognize three Eagle Scouts this evening. I'm not sure, because I haven't been able to look through everybody and see if they're all here, but the first is Philip Glenn. Philip here? I'll say a little bit about Philip. For his project, helped restain an outlook at Monmouth Battlefield Park. The project took Phil about a hundred man-hours, so we congratulate him on that effort and that accomplishment. And next, Eagle Scout is Adam Toth, and I know Adam is here, so come on up, Adam. Adam has been a scout since first grade in the Cub Scouts. His favorite memory is the luau at the Seabase High Adventure in the Florida Keys. This was a culmination of a seven-day trip in which he and his fellow scouts snorkelled and sailed. For his Eagle Scout project, Adam built a BMX track for Strider bikes. Those are bikes for students, children under age five, at the local Kramer Bike Shop in Howlett. To do so, he had to fill shape and create obstacles and turns. Adam, great job and thank you for your work. And our third Eagle Scout is Hudson Atkins. I don't know if Hudson is here, but Hudson's project was to install a bench so that those who are waiting to play or wanted to watch in a local park had a place to sit. In addition to donations, he fundraised for some of the materials by selling Krispy Cream doughnuts. The install took a weekend's worth of man-hours, while the planning and coordination took months. Congratulations to Hudson. Finally, for me, it is truly a privilege, the person I'm going to talk about is not here. Her sister is graduating from college today, and if you knew her, you would know that she would always be there for her family. Finally, I want to recognize one of our students that is one of a hundred and sixty students selected in the entire nation to be awarded the Presidential Scholarship. This scholarship is established in nineteen sixty-four to recognize and honor the nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. This year, Freehold Township's very own Cameron Vartone has earned this rare honors, and I'd like to congratulate her. And now, it is my privilege to introduce Mr. Brissadi, who will recognize additional Freehold Township recipients.
Thank you, Mr. Philopone, and I would like to echo the sentiments of others in thanking Dr. Sampson, district administration, the Board of Education for hosting this evening, and congratulate all of the recipients in the crowd. Truly an amazing representation of our district. First, I'm going to call up all of the members of our band that are in attendance. May you please make your way up to the front at this time. Freehold Township band members had their hard work pay off with a number of individuals earning allshore, allregion, and allstate honors. As they make their way to the front, I'm going to list eighteen different individuals that earned these honors. Talia Nao, Allshore Symphonic Band on flute. Victoria Sanchez Marquez, Allshore Symphonic Band soprano clarinet. Alyssa Floria, Allshore Symphonic Band soprano clarinet. Kevin Sweeney, Allshore Symphonic Band, he was principal alto clarinet, which means he was number one in the shore. Riley Talarico Dovel, Allregion Band on the bass clarinet, Allshore Symphonic Band, he was the principal bass clarinet, number one in the shore, and he was also accepted on clarinet. Bridget Mary Obern, Allshore Symphonic Band on the bass clarinet. Justin Morgan, Allstate Band, he was the principal soprano saxophone. He was Allshore Jazz Band, principal alto saxophone. Allregion Band, principal tenor saxophone on the wind ensemble. And Allshore Symphonic Band, principal alto saxophone. Aaron Stern, Allshore Jazz Band, he was principal baritone saxophone. He was Allregion Band on the Barry sax. Allshore Symphonic Band, where he was principal baritone saxophone, he was also the number two tenor saxophone. Brian Yanero, Allshore Jazz Band on the trumpet. Allshore Symphonic Band, he was a four-year member in both of those bands. Sophia Briggs, Allshore Symphonic Band on the trumpet. Anna Caton, Allshore Symphonic Band on the trumpet. Nancy Armstrong, Allshore Symphonic Band on the French horn. Sarah Ludsky, Allshore Symphonic Band on the French horn. Annabelle Fredericks, Allshore Jazz Band and Allshore Symphonic Band on the trombone. Carly Jones, Allshore Symphonic Band, she was the principal timpani. Kenny Yun, Allshore Jazz Band auxiliary percussion. Allshore Symphonic Band battery percussion. Greg Magus, Allshore Symphonic Band on battery percussion. And Davani Tandon, Allshore Jazz Band on the trumpet. And if that sounds like a lot, it's because it is. We had the most total representation of any school in the Shore Conference on the allshore bands, so congrats again to these students and to our band director, Mr. Gav. All right, athletically, we are celebrating both team and individual accomplishments. I'm going to start by calling up any of our wrestlers that are in the audience this evening. Please make your way down, both boys and girls. As you heard Ms. English talk about a little earlier, the girls' wrestling program in the state is a versioning one, and at Freehold Township High School, we are lucky to have three very successful female wrestlers. We have three in front of me this evening. Sophia Santorelli was first team allshore and a state placer. Rosie Curran was a region champ, first team allshore and a state placer. And Danielle Forlenza was a region champ and a Shore Conference champ and first team allshore. Congratulations. On the boys' side, we have three district champions. Alex Grant at 126 pounds, unfortunately, he was unable to make it. We also have Liam Flanagan at the 144-pound weight class. And Nick Benjamino at the 215-pound weight class. All three of the boys advanced to the state tournament in Atlantic City. I want to congratulate all three and give a very special thank you to Nick and Liam for their four years of service with our wrestling program. All right, we have three athletes earned first-team All Shore honors. We'll have them all come up at the same time. Michael Kraft, Joe Dominguez, and Jaden Holmes-Cotter. Like Meatloaf said, two out of three ain't bad. Jaden Holmes-Cotter is the one who's not here. He was first-team All Shore in boys' basketball. He also reached 1,000 career points this year, finishing second on our all-time scoring list, so congratulations to Jaden. Joseph Dominguez, first-team All Shore in boys' bowling. He also won the Monmouth County Individual Championship for the second year in a row. He will be going for a three-peat next year. And then we have Michael Kraft, first-team All Shore in ice hockey, one of our senior captains. Congratulations, Mike and Joe, thank you for everything. These guys make their way back to their seats. We're going to recognize somebody who is not here because what she has accomplished is too good to not recognize. Emma Zawatski. I'll start with the fact that we already recognized her, the first student recognition for all of her accolades across country, and then Gatorade came out and named her the New Jersey Girls Cross Country Runner of the Year. In addition to that, in the winter season, she earned two more state championships. She was the state sectional champion and the Group Four Champion in the 800-meter dash, and she doubled those by winning the 1,600-meter race as well. She also was the meet of champions winner at the 1,600-meter race. She was first-team All Shore and first-team All State in Winter Tracking Field. We expect to have her back again for her spring accolades and hopefully everything she does next year as a senior. And last but not least, I'd like to bring up our golf team. The golf team is the one sprint program fortunate enough to have their state tournament already in the books before this meeting, and they made it worth our while by winning the state sectional championship for Central Jersey Group Four. I was looking at our records, it was the first time in 30 years that Freehold Township High School has won a golf championship. The members of our team are Cory Gold, Matthew Cecilion, Matthew Gatos, Brett Luzzi, Christian Klamanowicz, who was the individual Central Jersey Group Four Champion. Again, first time in 30 years that's happened, only the second time in school history. And Ansel Patel. And as we're finishing pictures, I think it's appropriate to note for Ansel, who is a key member of the team. We're here for student recognition. It doesn't get more student athlete than Ansel, who is up here as a state champion golfer, a key contributor to the team. And unfortunately, it was not on the greens that day because he was taking an IB exam to bring his academics first. So congratulations to the team. Coach Gavis here with them. Thank you again to Dr. Sampson. Before that, I'd like to introduce the principal of Howell High School, Mr. Jeremy Robinson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I want to once again thank Dr. Sampson, the Board of Education for their ongoing support and the opportunities that they afford our student athletes to have, as well as our students and activities. I'm going to start with the caring award. I know most of my colleagues talked about what the caring award is. I'd like to call up Anne Marie Golly, please, at this time, and I'll say a few words about her. Anne Marie, can you come up? As Anne Marie is coming up, so Anne Marie is a phenomenal young lady. She went to Egypt and she was there teaching orphans how to speak English. And another quick note about Anne Marie is every student received a scholarship at the caring award, and Anne Marie decided that she wanted to take that scholarship and give it back to the building, and she is creating a scholarship with that money for the next couple of years. Just shows you what type of person she is, Anne Marie. Next, we have a Girl Scout of America Award recipient, and this has not been discussed yet, so I am going to say a few words about that, so you know what it is. So if we can have Kaylee Delela, please come up. Kaylee dedicated her Girl Scout Award project to educating others on how to shelter animals when they are unable to adopt. The project calls for the scout to make a lasting change in her community. She saw there was a need for donations at the Jersey Shore Animal Center. She held a pet rally and drive. The event helped educate and inspire others in ways that you can't imagine in regards to rescuing animals. At the event, she helped others make dog toys and cat scratchers to donate, sold homemade pet treats, and she really created some educational videos that was distributed through social media and making treats and homemade treats for dogs and animal shelters. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call up all of our members of TSA and our advisors as well. If you guys can all come up, and I can speak about you when you get up here. So fortunately, we do have two of our phenomenal advisors. Mrs. Roses and Mrs. Hire are here joining us in the front. Our TSA is state-renowned. We have one of the top TSAs in the entire state of New Jersey, if not the country, and we are so proud of them. The following students competed against 63 other schools across the state. And at TCNJ last week, we had many winners, first, second, third-place winners, but tonight I'm just going to introduce the people that won first place. So the first place board game design was Dominic Barbella, Laura Garcis, Sarah Manick, Emily Ribble, Marley Shepherd, and Leah Troche. Again, first place game designer. First place for the dragster design was Dante Maurisi. And first place for the video game design was Mr. Austin Perez. We are so proud of our TSA and our advisors. Again, one of the best TSA in the state of New Jersey, and we wish you luck in your next step in Nationals. Thank you for coming. Next up is All Shore Symphonic Band. Any member from the Howell All Shore Symphonic Band, please come up. So my colleagues have already spoken about what All Shore Symphonic Band is, so I'm not going to repeat that, but we do want to recognize the members that participated and won these great awards. So again, All Shore Symphonic Band, Caitlin Norcia, Jaden Latham, Jerry Rogerson, April Bischoff, and then we have Vincent LaRosa, who was also named to All State Orchestra Band, Jacob Waziga, also named to All State Orchestra Band, and Sophia Tabio. Congratulations, great job. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Pete Meehan, our supervisor of extracurricular activities, and go over some of our athletic awards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prabhu. At this time, I'd like to call up our girls bowling team. Please join us, okay? Our girls bowling team at Howell had a tremendous season. They were named the Central Jersey Group Four State Champions and also the overall Group Four State Champion. Melissa Vascon, Caleb DeMagic, Beth Ombat, Madison Lewis, Riley Palmese, Sophia Racher, Madison Regans, Alyssa Ricciotto, Reagan Smith, and Colleen Stapleton. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to call up two of our individual award winners for cheerleading. It's Sophia Ramos and Caitlin Pennergrass, could please join us at the podium? Sophia and Caitlin were named to the 2023 NJCDCA All State Team for Cheerleading. Congratulations, ladies. At this time, I have some more individual winners for indoor track. Samantha Strideski and Caitlin Inzarella, please join us at the podium. Samantha Strideski and Caitlin Inzarella were our Group Four Relay State Champions in the high jump. They hit a record of 10 feet 8 inches and set a new school record at Howell High School. Samantha, on an individual basis in high jump, was our Monmouth County Champ, Shore Conference Champ, Group Four Champion overall, MOC Champion, and then just recently competed at the prestigious Penn Relays where she took first place in the high jump. She's the first winner in state of New Jersey since 1991. At this time, I'd like to call up our Howell Wrestling Team. Please join us at the podium. As a team, they were District 22 Champions, and they were also the Central Jersey Group Four State Champions. Our members are Anthony Pallotti, Kieran Bruin, first District 22, second in Region 6, Jackson Campezi, Joe Kate, Rusty Capuza, Dane Poulfer, Julian Del Priede, Richie Diab, Travis Edmonds, Aiden Grant, Kylie Gudewitz, Shore Conference Champion, Region Champion, and also placed third in the state. Russell Halverson, DJ Henry, Shore Conference Champion, District 22 Champion, Region 6 Champion, and placed sixth in the state. Mason Holtman, Xavier Lopez, Tony Laredo, JJ Matchnick, Dylan Megan, Gavin Merker, Sebastian Ortega, District 22 Champion, Xavier Ortega, District 22 Champion, Region 6 Champion, Devin Perez, Ray Corelli, Brian Reyes, Thomas Richards, Marcelo Romano, Mike Suarez, Giovanni Scafidi, District 22 Champion, Patrick Schaefer, John Sullivan, Lucas Varial, and Jason Wiley. Congratulations, bands, Central Jersey Group Four State Champions.
Ladies and gentlemen, oops. I got it, Mr. Prabhu. We're going to call Dr. Winkley up from Marlborough, New Orleans. The whole crowd loves her. The first I want to bring up, Jovita Joseph. Jovita is a member of my executive student cabinet, and for folks who don't know, there are six students that represent each of the six high schools, and they do an inordinate amount of work over the course of the year with myself and Dr. Hazel and members of the central administrative team, and they take a lot of the things back that we do there into the building. So Jovita, where are you? There you go.
My name is Jovita Joseph, and I'm pleased to be speaking to you today as a member of the superintendent's executive cabinet and a representative of Marlborough High School. Tonight, I'm here to share with you the wonderful opportunities that Marlborough High School has to offer. Earlier this year, my friend Leila shared with you what we believe is prominent within this school district, the power of knowledge, unity, and relationships. Tonight, I will be sharing with you physical manifestations of these pillars within Marlborough High School. With AP season having just wrapped up, I would like to say that as a student who has taken nine APs, there's not a single exam that I've walked into feeling unsure of. The staff here at Marlborough are adamant in helping their students reach their full potential by hosting before and after-school review sessions, Saturday morning mock exams, and assigning work that makes a student feel comfortable with the format of the exam. Marlborough is also home to the Web Design Pathway as well as the Business Administration Bagner Program. Through the three-year Web Design Pathway, students are taught how to create professional websites, gain industry credentials through the NOCTI test, and explore their college and career options. The Web Design Pathway also allows students to collaborate with industry professionals in web design, and by the end of the course, they can earn up to 30 college credits from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. The Business Administration Bagner Program, also known as BAM, is a four-year program that has classes specifically concentrated in business, finance, management, economics law, and computer technology. Those who the business program must participate in the speaker series. This is when highly qualified professionals ranging from Rutgers professors to New Jersey state senators share their experiences in the business world to help students gain insight into the field that they may prospectively join. BAM kids are encouraged to join DECA and FBLA, which are both competitive clubs that Marlborough High School has frequently placed in. This year, both clubs have advanced to their national conferences. With over 70 clubs and sports and the availability to create more, Mustangs foster all kinds of relationships. For all games, the student section, also known as the stay game, ensures that the bleachers are filled, or as we like to say it, we pack the stable. In Marlborough, there are multiple ways to get involved in our school community, such as through peer leadership, A-Town Leaders for Diversity, NHS, or student council. A couple weeks ago, our Rutgers Model Congress won Best Large Delegation at their conference, and the We the People Club won in their regional conference, which allowed them to advance to Nationals. The guidance department here at Marlborough is stellar in its communication with students. Class-wide Google classrooms and frequent college and career planning meetings with counselors ensure that students are informed of opportunities within and outside of the school. By using score, students can instantly message their counselor, opening the line of communication. At Marlborough High School, no student is left behind. The importance of knowledge, unity, and relationships is advocated throughout the school, giving each student an optimal education and social experience. Lastly, I would like to congratulate all the students winning district awards tonight. Go Mustangs, and thank you.
And you know, it's not easy for the most polished adults to get up in front of a crowd this size and speak so articulately, so how about another big round of applause for Jovita? All right, so welcome to Marlborough High School. I hope everybody's enjoying their stay with us this evening. We're going to go ahead and start with our Monmouth County caring award recipient, so I'd like to ask Sidney Steinberg to come up to the front. So Sidney was selected as Marlborough High School's caring award recipient this year primarily for work in creating a website called PAO Buddies.org. After experiencing her own journey battling through hip dysplasia and PAO surgery, Sidney created the PAO Buddies site. The site focuses on connecting people with hip dysplasia who have had or are considering a PAO surgery. Sidney's hope is that by connecting individuals with a mentor or a surgery date buddy, she can bring together a new community of people who understand each other. In creating this community, Sidney has had a positive impact on hundreds of others, and her site is recognized as one of the main mental health resources for people with hip dysplasia in the world. Next year, Sidney will attend UPenn, where she intends to study neuroscience. Congratulations, Sidney. Congratulations, Sidney, and welcome. Next up from Marlboro High School are the Consumer Bowl students. So I'll call your names first and ask you to come up, and then I'll go ahead and describe your accomplishments. So Emma Corbin, Sean Gelman, Benjamin Katz, and Ethan Smith. Keep that to mind. These four students, plus one of the students that couldn't be here tonight, represent the Marlboro High School team that came in first place in the Monmouth County Consumer Bowl. All five students are students in our Business Administration Magnet Program, which I heard Jovita mention. The Consumer Bowl is a game show-style competition in which students answer consumer-related questions in multiple formats to test their knowledge of consumer issues. These five students performed exceptionally well and collectively came in first place in this year's competition. Congratulations to each of you. The next group of students to be recognized are those that came in first place in the Central Jersey DECA Conference. So again, I'll call the students up and then speak a bit about them. Priti Attardi, Elon Averson, Leila Kitella, I forgot to come from the beginning, so I'm not sure if she's here or not. That's how she did. And Elliot Drell. So DECA's mission is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Students are given a chance to compete in an event by industry and career cluster. After selecting their event, the students prepare for several weeks. The DECA competitive events involve both a career cluster exam and a role play provided onsite with a judge. The first-place winners have distinguished themselves with a stellar performance in all areas of the competition. So Priti Attardi, when I say your name, just step forward so we know what we're talking about. So Priti, please step forward. Priti won first place in Marketing Communication Series. Congratulations. Elon Averson. Elon won first place in Principles of Finance. Leila won first place in Account Application Series. And Elliot Drell. Elliot won first place in Principles of Marketing. Congratulations to Elliot. And also their advisor, Mr. Varial, happens to be in the audience tonight. His son won a district medal as part of the Howell Wrestling Team, so congratulations to Mr. Varial. The next group of students I'll call up to be recognized are the FBLA students. So please come up to the front. Priti Attardi, you can stay on up here. Samantha Burns, and Alexei Morozov. So Future FBLA is Future Business Leaders of America. It is the largest business-career-focused student organization in the world. FBLA inspires and prepares students to become community-minded business leaders through career preparation and leadership experiences. In March, the FBLA students competed at the State Leadership Conference. Among many other impressive results, we had four students come in first place in their respective competitions. So with us tonight, again, Priti Attardi, won first place in Accounting II, and Samantha Burns, who won first place in JAW Interview. All right, our largest contingency tonight is our Rutgers Model Congress group. So come on up, bring the entire group up here. So in Model Congress, students assume the roles of senators and representatives. They look the part, too, in Congress. Participants simulate sessions in various committees, and all activities are connected back to a central educational focus that provides a timely theme for that year's events. Our Rutgers Model Congress students competed this past April along with several other high schools in the tri-state area. Out of all those schools, the Marlboro High School delegation was awarded the competition's top honor of Best High School Delegation, which is awarded to the school that earns the overall first-place finish. So again, the delegation as a whole, all these students in front of you, won first place overall at that competition. So congratulations to the entire group and to their advisor, Mr. Yang. We also had three individuals that earned individual distinction. So as I say your name, just please step forward. So Brandon Baklada, he was named Best Delegate. Hardass Tantif, also named Best Delegate, and Damian Bogowski, named Best Delegate. Congratulations, RMC students. And now I'll turn it over to our supervisor of extracurricular activities, Mr. Wright.
Good evening. I would like to first bring up Isabella Murray. She actually still might be competing. Isabella was the fastest girl in Monmouth County. She took first place in the 55-meter death. We'll make sure to get her medal to her. The next four gentlemen I'd like to bring up: Dmitri Halliberto and W. Lee, and Gina Lee, and James Malort. These four are our anchors on our swing team. They won the Monmouth County Championship in the 200 medley relay. They also set the Monmouth County record, which was held... The last time it was set was 2003. So they are now the record holders for the Monmouth County as the fastest 200 medley relay. Congratulations.
So thank you, folks. We're going to take a five-minute recess and get back to regular board business, but thank you for coming out this evening, and it's always a wonderful representation of our student talent across the Freo Regional High School.
Where did everybody go? Oh, that's okay. We'll go on. I think Dr. Sampson's going to continue with his superintendent's report.
So thank you, Mr. Bruno. So obviously, since the passage of the budget at last board meeting, one of those items that is contained in next year's budget calls for the elimination of courtesy busing at the two-and-a-half-mile mark. Certainly, you know, a lot of public consternation around that. I do want to publicly thank our local officials, you know, on both sides of the aisle, and especially some of our local mayors and some of our elected officials. You know, I think that the elimination of the busing and where we have been brought from S2 was finally made apparent to the larger public and what that drastic reduction means. I am still hopeful that prior to the completion of the state budget on or about July 1, that there is some change to our funding circumstance. But presently, next year's budget does have courtesy busing eliminated. There's a very clear process outlined of how we're going to move forward with that, and that involves certainly a lot of conversation with our municipal officials. So Mr. Boyce has met with several of the town managers. Our principals have met with the police chiefs. So there's an incredible amount of planning and preparation to make sure that regardless of what happens in next year's budget, we're fully prepared for it. There's a potential option down the road for subscription busing that we're exploring. More information will be made available in the coming weeks of what that looks like with some individuals who might be concerned about hazardous routes and the such. And we're exploring those opportunities. But over the next couple of weeks, what's going to happen is that the members of our community are going to get simple letters. One simply saying, "Yes, you qualify for transportation," or "No, you do not." We'll be using Versatrans as our source of the mileage delineation. And there'll be a process for our parents and guardians to refute the determination and certainly challenge it, deal it, if they believe that they're within the two-and-a-half miles. And as I said, you know, we're still working through what a potential option of subscription busing would look like. But, you know, we're in the unfortunate place of having to plan for the elimination of that busing. That's, you know, somewhere around $3.5 million in our budget with the elimination of 130-plus positions. You know, to date, we don't feel... And eliminating 20 staff positions in this budget, we don't feel that it's practical or healthy for the student programs, the student academic programs in this district, which is what is, you know, really the hub of what we're here to do, to reduce our staff any further at this point. And I think it's also important to note, and this is one of the points that I've made to, you know, all of the folks that I've talked to over the past couple of weeks, is that if nothing changes with our current funding circumstance in the Freo Regional High School District, the cuts that we face in the subsequent budget will dwarf these cuts, right? So the $4 million that we received in one-time supplemental stabilization aid will have to be cut. The additional drawdown of S2 will have to be cut. And then whatever budget hole we found ourselves in through inflation and the such, obviously, will eat that up. And we anticipate that next year's budget might require an additional $10 million of reductions if something does not change. And I do think that our circumstances highlighted sort of the vagaries and the unpredictability of S2 and what that means for districts like the Freo Regional High School District. And I will say just once again publicly, you know, we now sit $20 million below the state's own adequacy line of what the state determines we should spend to provide our students a thorough and efficient education. All that said, I'll close with a note of hopefulness that folks are listening and working hard on our behalf. And the folks that represent our district have reached out numerous times, and I know that there's lots of conversations about our circumstance. And I do feel very hopeful that something may change. That concludes my report, Mr. Bruno.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boyce, are there any changes to agenda?
There are. On the back table, there were two sheets, one for changes and the second for an addendum. I'll do the changes first on both G4, which is approval of reappointments, and G13, approval of transfers. Board, please remove Teacher Caitlin Mahoney from both resolutions as she is resigning her position effective June 30, 2023. Which brings us to the addendum G1, approval of resignations. Please add Caitlin Mahoney effective June 30, 2023. Also, there is an addition to J5 and J6 that's highlighted on the yellow paper that's in the back. Also, Mr. Toscano, if you would.
We have one additional item to add. It'll be Item J18, Motion to Approve the Settlement Agreement Number 2022-10174 on file to the Office of Special Services.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's all?
That's all.
All right. And we have a couple of people who would like to speak tonight. This is our public participation part. Now, I'm going to totally mess up this name because I can't read it. It looks like Surtaram. Mrs. Surtaram from Manalapan? Hello? And the mic's right over here. Right here. How you doing?
My name is Julia Siroten. I'm a resident of Manalapan. I'm a mother...
How do you say your first name, your last name again?
Siroten.
Oh, I was really off.
Can you move the mic closer so we can hear it?
Sure. This is better?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Julia Siroten. I'm a resident of Manalapan. I'm a mother of two girls. One of them will be attending Manalapan Lab's magnet program next year. Unfortunately, we will not be qualified for transportation next year. We live about two miles away from the Manalapan High School. It's 43-minute walking, one-way, which is unacceptable. I'm extremely concerned for the safety of my child. I'm starting to get emotional. This is heartbreaking because we moved here a year ago to provide a better future for my girls, the first-generation born Americans who are both refugees. This is heartbreaking. This is forcing my family to either relocate, because we do not have a family of friends here. It's going to come through a solution where I have to make the extreme... And it will negatively impact our family. We will either have to relocate, or I'm going to have to enroll in a private school. Because we do not have... My husband and I work. I work for the city of New York. I'm a social worker, and I have to, you know, I have to go to work. And also I have a smaller sibling in the home who I need to take care of in the morning. We do not have a means of transporting and picking up my child from school every single day from September to end of June. It is not acceptable. I did communicate with Ms. Bruno. I'm not sure if they will know the faces via email. And what I'm looking... Hopefully, I'm hopeful to get a response today in regards to exactly what is being planned and the timeframes for it, because we have to plan accordingly. I can't come to August 1st or mid-August of August 30th and be like, "Oh, well, we don't have a solution for you." So you figure out how your child is going to go to school as of September 6th. That is unacceptable. We need timeframes. My family needs timeframes. I'm speaking on my own behalf. We need specific timeframes as to when those resolutions are going to be proposed to the public so we can decide if it's appropriate or not for our family or not. Because I cannot sit and wait for somebody to come and tell me what's best for my child. At this point, I'm considering to taking her out of Manalapan High School and enrolling her in a private. Because I cannot... I can't. It's not going to happen. She's not going to be walking 43 minutes every morning in the winter at 6:30 in the morning in order to make... She's on time in school. It's not. And I understand the position you're in is very, very difficult. We do understand that. But we also... We're asking, and I address Ms. Bruno, that you guys come into the table with the families, with the public, the people who elected you guys, and our voice matters. You know, we need to sit down together and figure out what is best for our kids, where the families, where the parents. So we will know. We will come with ideas together, and that's important, and it needs to be taken into consideration. So I'll be looking forward to either email, public notification of some sort, of the timeframes to when and what resolutions are on the table, and the sooner the better.
So ma'am, I just went through that in my opening comments. So as far as the timeline is concerned, for notifications and such... First of all, the presentation around that was February. The final notice was during the presentation for the budget. And within the next couple of weeks, parents are going to receive communications from the schools. I just indicated that. The decision for students to walk or not is a parental decision ultimately in terms of how they get to school. We're in a very difficult position where there are no good choices in what we will reduce or not. We've been talking about the budget difficulties for five years at every single board meeting publicly about what position we're in financially. We've reached out. There's plenty of information on our website. You can go right there and find everything that you need for who represents you and what that looks like. And I noted that we are talking to municipalities about, you know, what a subscription busing route might look like for parents who can't get their children to school because of work and things like that, and that will be an option for parents as well. And that will be an option for parents as well. And all of that's gonna come to parents within the next couple of weeks for September. So all that work has been done. We're ready to roll that out. We're hopeful still that there'll be a change to the state budget and they'll recognize some of the difficulties that this has placed upon our school community members. But I would also ask you to continue to advocate because this is a funding issue in the state of New Jersey and we've been cut twenty-seven million dollars. And so when you're cut twenty-seven million dollars, and I would argue, and I've said to some of our members of our public, I've asked them, can you describe any way that your child's program has changed in our high school in the past three or four years? And to a person, they couldn't identify anything. And I said, that's because we managed that twenty-seven million dollar cut that well. But we're to the point where we can't manage it any longer without some of the things, without something large being reduced. For us, that's the inordinate transportation cost. We certainly don't want to reduce that. But that is, that is where we can draw the largest reduction from without cutting another fifty teachers when we've already cut one hundred and thirty. And so that's the unfortunate position we're in from the state. That information will be communicated to parents long before the school year ends. So you will have months to make, to plan and make any other arrangements. And we'll continue to work with our municipalities about potential subscription busing and what that might look like for people that are within that two and a half miles that may wanna make use of that. So all that is, is being planned and is going to be sent and shared with parents within the next couple of weeks.
Appreciate it. If I may, just two comments. One, the subscription busing, my understanding is that we have to pay for it. It has to be reasonable. We're all working families. As you noted yourself, inflation is high. Again, I'm speaking on my behalf, my family. We need to, it has to be cost-effective as well. Like, I can't pay a thousand dollars every month for busing when I can pay the same thing for a private school. It has to make sense. And another thing I wanna know, we live around the corner from Mims, from the middle school in Manalapan. My child is not even allowed to walk there. Not only that, she's not allowed to stand on the opposite side of the road for the bus to pick her up because there's no sidewalk. We, me and my husband rode the route from our home to Manalapan High School. Three-quarters of the road does not have sidewalks. And I understand the mayor of Manalapan said that they're gonna be building sidewalks on Route 522. It's nowhere near me. I live on the other side. So regardless, my kid is gonna be walking on the road at six-thirty in the morning in the winter when it's dark. That's, it's either that or she's going to private school if there is no reasonable solution. And I'm pretty sure it's affecting similarly all others, other boys that are concerned. I appreciate, thank you.
Mrs. Fox? Is that you back there?
Yes.
Come on up.
I think it's Deano, but we think both of them.
Mrs. Darrell, is that you two?
Yes.
Okay, come on up.
Hi, everybody. I was here two weeks ago to talk about the lacrosse situation. And I'm very disappointed that no one, not anybody from the executive board, from the Board of Ed, reached out to discuss the issues. So I'm back. And I will be here every meeting if I have to until this is resolved. So I wanna address a few things. Last time, the attorney said that you have the right to cut students from the team who are based on skills. Okay, that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about discrimination. And additionally, we're alleging that there is a misappropriation of funds that could be as much as six figures. So I honestly do not understand why you're not taking this more seriously. It is a serious concern. And I also would like to address Dr. Sampson. I just wanna clarify that we have to pay a thousand dollars for our boys to try out. And that's not just like a, you know, sometimes you write a check and they just hold the check. We had to pay it. It wasn't just writing a check that they held on to. And if you make the team, they cash it. So there's a lot of questionable activity going on. And we need this to be taken seriously. I'm not sure how to proceed at this point, but I'm definitely frustrated, still.
I just, I just was waiting until the convo was completed, that's all.
Yes.
I will reiterate what we said at the last meeting, Ms. Cahill.
Cahill.
Cahill, I apologize. You raise financial concerns about an organization that the board does not control and the board does not contract with. You have been advised to take your concerns. If there are concerns of financial issues as it relates to a recreational organization that is outside of the board's control, you have to take those to local state authorities. We do not have oversight over that organization. We explained that to you at the last meeting. And that has not changed. And as far as my statement at the last meeting that you're attributing to me, I did state that the board has the ability to set criteria for membership on athletic teams. That is not discrimination. The U.S. Department of Education has made that very clear, that there can be certain skill level expectations as it pertains to extracurricular activities. It is not discrimination. The district does not discriminate.
Is it Manalapan High School lacrosse? Or is it not Manalapan High School lacrosse? Either it is or it isn't.
Ma'am, I'm not gonna get engaged in a back-and-forth with you. You are raising concerns, financial concerns. You keep flip-flopping the organizations. There is a Manalapan High School team, okay? You are raising concerns about the Manalapan Lacrosse Club, which is outside of us. Yes, that is, I've seen all of the documentation that you both have submitted. That is what you are raising concerns about. There is no misappropriation of funds in the district's accounts. All the funds that are paid for, that are, excuse me, that have contributed to the district for the sport have been spent adequately and appropriately.
Is it Manalapan High School lacrosse or not? That's my question.
I've answered that now three times.
You have it. Is it Manalapan High School lacrosse? I mean, is it a, is it a school team or is it not a school team? That's all I'm asking.
Now for the third time, it is, there is a Manalapan High School lacrosse team.
Right. That's the one that my son tried out for last year and was going to try out for this year if he was not injured. Is the Manalapan High School lacrosse team? That's what we are speaking about.
Miss, you know, I, Mr. Bruno, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't, Mr. Messinger, I wouldn't engage any further because we're going in circles.
I would just say that there's a difference between the team and the organization with which you're raising the concerns about the financial improprieties or anything else. And the mechanisms to address that are through the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office or other entities to investigate that. The agreement that the board has entered into with that organization on our end, everything is appropriate. All the finances are accounted for. The contractual stuff is done. On the back end of the organization that you're asking questions about, if you have concerns there, the appropriate avenues, what Mr. Toscano was saying, the appropriate avenues are not the Board of Ed because we have no oversight over that entity. They're the Prosecutor's Office, potentially the IRS and anything along those lines. But not, it doesn't fall under our purview.
So this is specifically a rec team? Is that what you're saying? It is not a Manalapan High School--
No, the rec organization helps to fund and sponsor the lacrosse team in part, in partway to fund that, to fund the majority of that for the high school team. But the oversight that they are responsible to is not us in terms of that whole entity.
So if there's an issue of discrimination, that's with them and not with you? I mean, don't they have to follow board policy?
Concerns around discrimination fit with, within the high school. We've followed our policy and we've followed the guidance from, as it relates to any civil rights concerns or anything along those lines.
Mrs. Fox?
So, just for clarity, I have a couple of questions. And it's my understanding that an organization is collecting funds on behalf of the Manalapan High School lacrosse team. And there is board policy that specifically says that an organization that is collecting funds on behalf of the Manalapan High School lacrosse team or any other organization run by the school district must account for their money to the school district. Because in the end, they are raising money in the name of the high school. That being said, I just wanna clarify, I wanna clarify that so that everyone on the board understands that we're missing words and we're getting into details and we're getting a little nuanced in how we're presenting this, oh, it's this organization or that organization. Quite frankly, it doesn't matter which organization is funding the money. The money is being raised in the name of the Manalapan High School. And if it is raising money in the name of the Manalapan High School according to board policy, it must account to the Manalapan High School. That being said, according to New Jersey Statute 15A, nonprofit organizations are required to have a minimum of three trustees, articles of incorporation, bylaws, and elected officials, including a president, secretary, treasurer, who conducts, who conduct regular meetings. Surprisingly, the organization currently contracted by the board to manage funds for both the boys' and girls' high school lacrosse teams lacks all of those essential components. While I understand that the board may not have been aware of these violations, now that I have brought them to your attention, I would like to inquire about the steps the board plans to take to ensure that the funds raised for the Manalapan High School programs are being managed and utilized appropriately, whether or not they're contracted out or being done in-house. During the last meeting, there seemed to be some confusion about whether or not the Department of Education's rubric guidelines apply to a school-sponsored athletic program. According to the Department of Education, their rubric guidelines should be applied to any school-based program in institutions receiving federal funding. There is no exception for an athletic program. Since the district receives federal funds, what will the board do to make sure that district's athletic programs are in compliance going forward? Finally, it has come to my attention that a teacher currently under investigation is being transferred to the school where his accuser attended. While I am bewildered by the district's decision to create a potentially dangerous situation for a student, I would like to understand what safeguards will be put into place to protect this student while this investigation is ongoing.
Mr. Bruno, could I--
Sure.
As pertains to matters of personnel, the board does not discuss matters of personnel in public. We also have no idea what you're talking about.
It's my understanding--
One sec, Ms. Fox. Can I finish?
Sure.
In addition, as I said last time, there is no Department of Education rubric for lacrosse trials. That is a local decision that each school district sets their own criteria. I talked to you after the meeting last time extensively. There is no rubric for lacrosse. I have no idea what you're talking about. When you're mentioning Department of Education, because when we were outside after the meeting, you told me you were incorrect. It's not the Department of Education. You said it was the Department of Labor.
No, I said the Department of Education put out a rubric for academic, for any type of academic program. Sponsored program.
There is no rubric as it pertains to athletics. And then lastly, I would just address, ma'am, if you have issue with the corporate organizational structure that you feel is not properly licensed or is not following its own bylaws, you should bring that concern to the Department of Community Affairs, which oversees nonprofit organizations in the state of New Jersey. The Board of Education does not have oversight over that and has no authority over that. And that's, I think I addressed each one of the points.
I think you didn't address the issue of transferring a teacher that's currently under investigation.
We do not speak about personnel matters, okay?
I'm not interested about your personnel. I'm asking--
Well, you're talking about somebody who apparently works for us and we have no clue who you're talking about. Do not mention their name.
I'm not about to, I will not, I will not be violating any privacy.
You're not gonna get, you're not gonna get a response from us about that, that teacher, that boy.
I'm not asking about the teacher. I'm asking about how we're gonna make sure that the kid that's in the, in the school is gonna be protected.
Well, why don't you email that information to the superintendent tomorrow? Because we don't really have the clue to what you're talking about, okay? Anything else to say?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move along. Okay, may I have a motion to approve G1 through G14?
Moved.
I hear one down there.
Mrs. Capiello?
Mrs. Capiello? Second? Mrs. Fox? Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Motion, please. Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except in G4. I abstain from Michael Capiello, Michelle England, Brian Post, Pete Mehan, Craig Churn, Merle Norwich, and Jeremy Broverman. And in G13, I abstain from Merle Norwich.
Mrs. Hagley?
Yes, except on G4, I abstain for Charles Scott Kucheski, Debbie Belly, Laura Lum, Matthew Veroni, Michael Lazon, Pat LaGravenus, Christopher Provo, Matthew Poulsen, Kim Bramley, Pete Mehan, Craig Churn, Michelle England, Brian Post, Jeremy Broverman, Joanne Becker, Carl Kucheski, Rachel Go, Adam Rusati, Chabri Dao, Michael Dillon, Leanne Reckonwohl, Alicia Sesso. For G6, Sean Voice, and for G8, Christopher Provo.
Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes, for all, with the exception of Noah on G4, 5, and 6.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, and I just wanna thank Dr. Hazel and you, Mr. Boyce, for all the wonderful work that you do for the district.
Mr. Bruno? Yes. We're now gonna take H, H1 through I3. It's under program operations, building, transportation, and physical plan. May I have a motion?
Moved.
Mrs. Capiello? And second was--
McCob.
Mrs. Fox. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. I have a roll call. Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Hagley?
Yes.
Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno? Yes. We're gonna take Educational Programs and Administration, J1 through K4. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call. Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything-- Yes, on everything except in K1, I abstain from Dr. Sampson.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, except on K1, I abstain for Sean Voice and Dr. Sampson.
Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno? Any board members have old business to discuss?
Yes, Mr. Bruno, I, I had something that I wanted to read, if I can.
Sure.
Good evening. I was unable to attend our board meeting on April 27th because I had a previously planned vacation. I want my fellow board members to know if I was at the meeting, I would have voted with you in adopting our budget that proposed cutting courtesy busing. This was not an easy decision and not one that we would have ever made, had to make short of the financial situation imposed on us by the state. It is additionally difficult because each of the schools we represent are disproportionately impacted by cutting courtesy busing. In the four years I have served on this board, I don't think there has been one board meeting in which we did not discuss the impacts of S2 on our district. I do not take kindly to certain individuals and how suggesting I was not transparent about the possibility of cutting courtesy busing. I encourage those individuals to watch the Transportation Study presentation at our board meeting in February. State law does not require any high school district to provide busing to students who live within two and a half miles of their school. There are many districts throughout the state that do not provide courtesy busing, including Tom Silver, Cherry Hill, Livingston, and others. My job is to ensure our administration has the resources to provide a thorough and efficient education to our students. We have been cut into submission and there is no immediate relief in sight. I want to say a few things about S2 specifically. This district has been the model of an efficient and regionalized district, exactly what state legislators envisioned by encouraging districts to consolidate. It is unconscionable and frankly unconstitutional to me that the S2 funding formula would have resulted in our district being cut to levels that brought us below adequacy, nevertheless twenty, twenty million dollars below adequacy. I urge all of our legislative representatives, regardless of political affiliation, to immediately introduce legislation that will prevent any district currently below adequacy from any further cuts under S2, and to work together towards a long-term funding formula that is transparent and predictable. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other members with old business?
Bruno?
Yes.
Could you just give Mr. Toscano and I a moment?
I will give you a moment.
I just want to...
Go ahead.
Do we need to take a five-minute recess perhaps?
Yeah.
Five minutes? We're gonna take a five-minute recess?
Sorry.
Okay, we're gonna shorten that recess. All right. I'm not hearing any, any more old business, we're gonna go right into new business. Does anybody have any new business they would like to cover tonight?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
I would just like to say how happy I am to see that we finally will have student teachers back in our buildings. It's about time that law changed or policy changed, which made it difficult for us to have them because of student privacy and filming issues or whatever it was, but I'm so happy to see them coming back to the buildings because they've been an asset and, and many of our present-day teachers have been student teachers in our buildings, so we've had the ability to see how they perform, mold them, see just what they can offer, and I'm just, I'm really glad that they're back.
Thank you, that's a really great point that you made, because many of them do become teachers full-time after that period, so yes, it's really nice to have them back. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other new business? Not hearing any new business. May I have a motion to adjourn? No, gosh, she's, she's, and then has she. May I have a motion to adjourn?
You did it, right?
I made a motion to adjourn, I just broke the record. I need a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Parisi.
All in favor?
All in favor. Happy Mother's Day, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.